Good evening. We are now convening the committee as a whole here, beginning with ordinance 23-25. And to begin the presentation this evening, I understand we may hear some remarks from Mayor Hamilton.
Thank you very much. If it's okay, I may, can I shift this a little bit? Is that going to break anything? We usually try to look at you a little. Good evening. Good to be with you. Thank you again. I also want to thank, as we begin this evening, the staff. You have a number of our cabinet leadership here in the room with us. Appreciate all of their good, hard work, as well as some on Zoom, and in particular, thanks to the Controller's Office, Controller Underwood and his colleagues, who have worked so hard for this budget. So 30 days ago, we began our detailed budget presentations, including with some context and history of our community's excellent position. Now, tonight is the formal budget hearing on six ordinances. And for the public, we'll briefly outline key parts of the budget, and particularly note changes since that August presentation week. You'll also hear from Controller Underwood and Human Resource Director Pearson to add their comments, and the cabinet are available as well tonight. Our Civil City 2024 budget proposal is just over $131 million, up about 1.4% from the 2023 budget. When we add the one-time appropriations of just over $19 million, combining the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and local community revitalization and enhancement district creed sources, we come to 151 million, up 16.4% from 2023. The total 2024 city budget, including utilities, transit, and housing authority, is $229 million, a decrease of just under 1% from the current 2023 budget. When you add the ARPA creed, 19, that total is $248 million, up 7.6% from 2023. Beyond adding the detailed ARPA creed appropriations, which we'll review in a moment, financial changes made since the August budget presentations are: One, including the 5% increase to council compensation, which was inadvertently left out; Two, increasing the city clerk annual compensation to $87,000 to conform to the resolution that this council passed; Three, increasing the digital equity position in information and technology services to full-time, from half-time, paid out of digital equity payments from the vendor; and four, a slight $14,000 increase in the property tax caps, negative impact, based on new information we got from the state. Those are the four financial changes other than the ARPA creed. The 2024 budget continues 2023's range of transformational investments, supported by the economic development local income tax, and it focuses new investments in the three key areas we discussed last month. First, our continued emphasis on being an employer of choice, with our cost of living adjustment of 5% for all non-union employees, plus a $500 bonus, flat payment to nearly all employees, plus continuing this year's new benefits of the $780 retirement savings match, the health savings account boost, paid family leave, continuing education reimbursements, and support for employees who need out-of-state access to reproductive health care. We also plan to launch the new employee health clinic before year-end. The 2024 budget proposes 32 additional full-time equivalent positions, FTEs, in numerous areas of the city's work, including resources to manage traffic, to oversee our sidewalk programs, to expand the public jobs program with Centerstone, a new street crew to repair after utility work, and additional changes at CBU, Community Family Resource Department, Housing and Neighborhood Development, Information Technology Services, Human Resources, parks, animal shelter, and council offices. The 2024 budget also includes $500,000 to cover potential reclassifications or market adjustments resulting from a third-party compensation study that is underway now, planned to be completed before year-end. That study and those 2024 resources may suggest and will allow adjustments across all city employment. Second, the 2024 budget continues and expands ongoing major investments in our public safety efforts. We're doubling support for Centerstone's 988 response services, enhancing our 911 systems and protocols, and piloting two new ways to respond to 911 calls. One pilot, a team with sworn police officer like a downtown resource officer, and one or two non-sworn colleagues. Another pilot will be two non-sworn public safety employees, which will also include five FTE new, non-sworn, temporary community service specialists who will focus on services downtown. That's funded from the existing base BPD budget, Police Department budget. The fire department will also expand non-sworn services with three new community paramedic positions to collaborate with the mobile integrated health program launched last year. We also will expand recruitment support overall and continue our rental and down-payment assistance programs for public safety officers living in the city. I can also report we are in final negotiations with a lender to partner on the $100,000 downpayment purchase program, support to be announced soon, for which we've received five submissions of interest thus far. Tonight, we bring two new important adjustments to enhance public safety, both within the budget that we have presented. First, for the fire department, in light of ongoing pressures on retention in particular, we seek to increase the August package, which you may recall added an extra three percentage points and $500 to the labor contract, this year's pay, and replace that with a flat $5,000 increase in pay for all sworn firefighters over their 2023 pay. This provides more for all of our firefighters. It fits within the budget in light of current vacancies and hiring pace, and it helps us move closer to local and state markets. We welcome an amendment to the salary ordinance to this effect. Second, for police, as you know, the current labor contract has included major salary increases. In addition, in order to continue to enhance recruitment, in 2024, we will increase base pay for new probationary officers by $5,000. Those positions are already budgeted at the officer first-class salary, so no budget increase is needed. These public safety investments, along with the new public safety headquarters underway in showers west, will accelerate and deepen the ongoing progressive evolution of Bloomington's public safety services, which are, in my opinion, the best in the state. Third area, to continue our Recover Forward program, we ask to appropriate $19.4 million of one-time investments from the final year of ARPA funds, along with the recently released creed funds. Like previous ARPA investments, the proposals will help achieve key community objectives and support long-term transformational investments, ones that also potentially can leverage substantial additional funding. 2024 budget's one-time investments encompass about $12 million in creed funds and $7 million in ARPA, split among five major categories. We went through these generally back in August. I'll just repeat the details and the allocations between the two funding sources. First is $11 million in basic infrastructure investments, with particular impact in improved resilience, safety, and efficiency, and a focus on downtown. This includes $1 million in new sidewalk funding from ARPA. Most of the rest is from creed as we go through this. $2 million in creed in street improvements, focusing on enhancing bike and bus routes. $2 million in Safe Streets for All match a federal program explicitly meant to leverage substantial federal funding. $2.7 million, also creed, to improve our traffic signals to allow preemption and better coordination for transit and public safety vehicles. $1.2 million in neighborhood greenway support, and $2 million specifically for downtown enhancements, including lighting, art, safety, and necessary garage maintenance investments. These funds are found in the budgets of the Public Works, Engineering and Planning and Transportation Departments, with a small amount in Economic Sustainable Development. The second major category is $4.5 million for one-time housing investments, mostly from ARPA, including $0.5 million for very low-income housing and homeless services, $2 million for workforce affordable rental supports, and $2 million for homeownership supports, which includes $1 million from creed. Together, this will help sustain great momentum on housing to keep expanding our nearly 1,400 units of affordable housing developed in the last few years. The third category is $1.6 million assigned to Economic and Sustainable Development, including $800,000 for jobs and workforce development, with $325,000 from ARPA and $475,000 from creed; $575,000 for continued solar and efficiency investments; $200,000 from ARPA, remaining $375,000 from creed; and $225,000 from creed for downtown activation through arts and cultural partnerships. The fourth category is $1.25 million in ARPA investments, directly in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging projects and programs, including $600,000 for a wide range of parks' accessibility investments, $325,000 for a series of information and technology services digital equity investments, and $325,000 for a range of DEIB programs led by Community and Family Resources Department. Fifth and finally is $1 million of ARPA funds to invest in public health, assigned to Community and Family Resources Department to support improved mental health services and substance use disorder responses. These city funds should leverage substantial additional funds from other public and nonprofit sources to be coordinated and applied to address very serious public health threats in our community. This $19 million in one-time investments are a major step in Bloomington's progress, and they connect to enormous federal opportunities ahead. So to conclude, let me just note this 2024 budget also continues our very strong fiscal condition with prudent and conservative reserves. It continues and accelerates our outstanding community momentum in key issues for the coming decade. The proposed budget will help grow the middle class in Bloomington with good jobs. It will lower costs and improve quality of life with investments in transportation, and housing, and public spaces and events. Please also don't forget, all of us, the critically important childcare costs that will be addressed by the upcoming school referendum. This budget invests in our people, both inside city government and in our community as a whole, and it invests in our security, both with its public safety enhancements and responses to the climate crisis. I'm very proud of the work that everybody's done for this. I want to thank again all the staff who've worked so hard to put all this together and your attention. I hope I'll get your support. We will get your support for this. I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have, or if not, also happy to keep rolling with our Controller and our Human Resource Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will ask, are there any questions for the mayor? Council Member Volin?
Is this the appropriate moment to talk about creed funds, or will it be a later point in the meeting that I should direct those questions?
That's a good question. He certainly raised the issue, so if he would have a question now, let's entertain it.
I have a number of questions about the creed. I know the mayor is expecting them. So what I see in your proposal, the investments that are talked about, and I asked for a breakdown of the ARPA and creed funds that would be used to enable some of these initiatives, and a full $10 million are going to be, will be spent from the creed on these initiatives. But I find that at least 7.9 million of those dollars are going to projects that are not in, or it can't be determined whether they are in District Six, in the creed, which is where the money was raised from. Can you please talk about why it is that, well, I mean, I just have a number of questions. Maybe I should just let you start by saying why you use creed funds in that way.
Well, thank you for the question, Senator Volin. The creed funds that we talk about, local resources, just to put the context for everybody, creed funds was a district created, as you reminded me, I believe, at the, near the end of the Fernandez administration, and it was a state program that allowed us to identify a district from which a certain component of the regular state taxes paid by enterprises there would be returned from the state to us to use for various purposes intended to help accelerate development in the district. And it was a large district. I don't think it's exactly contiguous with the Sixth District, but it's a general downtown area. It's important to note that those taxes were, there were, nobody in the creed district paid any different taxes from anybody outside the creed district. Everybody paid the same taxes to the state. The state had determined, we will give you back some of that money, community, to use for these purposes, and we did use those for some of those purposes. Then, the state also said those districts last a certain length of time, and if there's money that's not used, then you terminate the district and you may use those resources for any legal purpose in the city. We, as you know, I think through the council, we terminated that district. We have a balance, have had a balance of 16-plus, 18 million of creed. We have used some of that money in the district in the past, but that big balance has remained. I will say, and we may have philosophical differences about this, but our approach in this administration has been certainly to be cognizant of needs in the downtown district generally, and a great deal of this investment will go to the downtown. But I think we took a broader lens and said, what are the most impactful investments, that one-time investments that could be made with this? And through a long process of iteration with our staff, and we've shared it with you certainly for quite some time, identified those needs. It is also true that, for example, the, let's take the $2 million in street funding that we're proposing, which will focus on enhancing street surfaces that are also bus and/or bike lane corridors. That will certainly include some in the downtown, but that will be a detailed process to develop exactly which ones that would be, based on street quality, equity issues, timing, all kinds of things like that. So we cannot give an exact allocation of that, but we have approached this with a pretty broad lens of what is most valuable to advance the city's interests.
Well, I want to call your attention to the, well, I mean, before I put up the document that created the creed, I will acknowledge, yes, the first district was the Thompson Creed, which was reacting to the loss of the RCA site in 1997, eight. And then, the state allowed a second district to be created, so we decided that the downtown needed revitalization, and that ordinance was passed at the end of 2003. So, and districts are supposed to last 15 years. Now, that period coincided with the first term of your administration. There, in the entire existence of both creeds, $6.82 million was spent in the Thompson Creed for various projects, Cook Pharmica, the destruction of Building One, Best Beers. But only two projects were spent of the downtown creed. One of them was a mere $32,000 to rehab part of the Chase Bank building for a new business, and the other was 730-some thousand dollars to rehab the Fountain Square building for Invisage. But there still remains something like, as you said, $7 million in the Thompson Creed and $10 million plus in the downtown creed that were never spent. Why did the administration not make more of an effort to spend, say, the $10 million in the downtown creed during its first term?
I think the short answer is, we treated, I'll tell you, we treated the creed asset, if you will, as a kind of a investment pool that could be used in the case, for example, of another catalent, Cook Pharmica, in the case of a major economic development project that we may be coming. We certainly didn't spend it quickly. We used a lot of TIF money instead of that, of creed funding. And I think I followed the tradition of my predecessor, who tended to kind of husband it as a potential use. And then, when that, when the rules changed, we think about it differently.
What do you mean by when the rules changed?
When we're allowed to use it for any legal purpose for the city, by the state.
Right, but those rules didn't, those rules didn't change. It was always known that if the district expired with monies unspent, it could go to the general fund.
When the, when the use, the rules governing the money changed by time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is Resolution 0326 that I have on the screen here, and I want to call attention to this whereas clause. I'm going to read part of it. Whereas Bloomington's downtown needs assistance to remain vital, as the costs of developing and operating a business downtown are significantly greater than the costs of new development in a greenfield area, the following conditions make the creation of a downtown creed district desirable, and it names several things: downtown vacancies, utility infrastructure, parking infrastructure's a particularly interesting one to me, employment opportunities, and building upgrades. Now, I think that the one case of money spent, substantial money spent in the downtown creed was for that last part. But why, for example, did the administration not pursue the use of creed money to rebuild the Forest Street Garage when we decided it needed to be rebuilt in 2019?
I think the short answer is what I just told you, that we reserve that money for potential uses. And at this point, we certainly welcome the council's view of what is the best use of the unused money.
But I mean, it's a convenient thing to basically say, well, we're holding the money in case an industry comes along, but, oh, the period has ended. There is no longer any use for this money. Now we're going to put it in the general fund.
Look, if the council thinks that the city ought to just hold on to this money and wait, that's your, certainly your prerogative. We're not, we're not proposing to use it all. I think some of it should be kept available for flexibility. You know, we continue to earn TIF money as well. But we think having this big balance, it makes sense to try to do things that are advancing the community.
But I mean, you're actually making my point for me. Why is it that you wouldn't use the big balance on other purposes if you, I mean, in 2019, the district had expired. We knew that the Forest Street Garage needed to be rebuilt. We knew that the two garages at Seventh and Morton were funded by TIF dollars in 2001, 2003. Here was a district, this is an explicit, I'll read you the paragraph. Although there are three parking garages available to downtown residents and businesses, additional parking is needed to encourage businesses that employ larger numbers of people to remain or relocate to downtown, and the costs of providing this infrastructure are high. We knew that it was expensive to maintain structured parking. Here, we had to maintain this. It was a perfect use of this money. Why not use it then? Why, I mean, you're
You've asked me, I've told you. I guess one point I haven't made is that the creed money, particularly now, as we know, is much more flexible than TIF money, can be used for other kinds of things, operating expenses and others. It's still one time, but it's more flexible.
It could have been used for any of these purposes. It didn't have to, you're focusing on employment opportunities. It could have been used for, it could have been used to help fund the, the creed district includes the corner of Third and Lincoln, where we had a big utility break, where we had the flood of the fire station. The fire station and the police station, as they are now, are not in the creed, but that intersection is. Could some of that money not have been used to fix that? I mean, I just, I'm not understanding why you decided you didn't need to use the money for what it was originally collected for.
I don't know that I can explain it anymore, other than that we looked at our best options. I think it's, I think it's probably relevant, and if Controller Underwood wants to step in, it's fine for me. He may have a judgment about this, too. I think it's appropriate to note that in a jurisdiction like Indiana, when we're a second-class city, there are, we often look at ways, how do we maximize our ability to protect our fiscal strength, and also do things that the state won't let us always do easily. You know how hard it is to raise revenue? You know how hard it is to generate that with our own decision? So we do have to pick and choose among different options, and if some can, something can be bonded for, with TIF, we may do that. But I certainly appreciate that you may have made a different judgment if you were in this chair.
Well, I guess maybe the last question I would ask is, what would you say to the taxpayers, especially the commercial taxpayers of the creed district, who were sold this idea in 2003, here's why we're doing it, expecting that the money would be spent in their district, and now come to find that almost none of it was spent in their district, and that now a significant chunk of it, more than half the money, at least, that you're proposing now, will be spent in the rest of the city?
Well, I won't, I won't, we don't know exactly where it will be spent, but
Break it down for us.
But I think the main point I would say, as you asked, what would I say to them? I would say, remember, this didn't cost you a dime. No, no one of you paid any more dime in taxes than you would have through this whole period. And the state would have taken that money and spent it in Fort Wayne, or Evansville, or prisons, or Medicaid, or anything the state wanted to spend it on. Instead, they returned it to us, which we appreciated as a city, with the opportunity to use it for a period of time to enhance that district, which we did, as needed, as judged by my predecessor, me. But we didn't feel the need to do it all. We had other options. And now we have much more flexibility with it. And I've proposed a whole set of things to do with it, and if you don't like them, you can propose other things to do with them, so.
Just because they didn't pay extra taxes doesn't mean that they shouldn't be jealous of the tax dollars that have come back to them for specific use in an area that, at that time, and even now, could still use investment, too.
I guess I probably would also remind them, it might be good to encourage our state government to give us more flexibility with these funds from the beginning.
That's not the point, but thank you for your answers.
Senator Volin, thank you. Are you interested in your questions?
Yes, I
I believe I saw a hand up from Councilmember Rallo. Are you still there?
I am here. Thank you. I have three, I think, quick questions. Mayor Hamilton, thank you for your increases to both the honoring our requests for the city clerk increase and for the increase to public safety personnel. How many affected officers does this include for the police?
I'm going to look at Chief DeKoff. How many officers would be the new probationary officers that would be directly affected?
And are we lacking in that, in this particular category?
Mike DeKoff, Police Chief. It would go to any new officer that is hired. They would all start out as probationary officers, so we currently
I see. Okay, so it's an incentive, essentially. Okay.
Well, it's raising that base salary to help with recruiting efforts for probationary officers.
Okay. And what about the officer first class that would be then paid less than the new
No, their salary is set by the salary ordinance, and so the probationary officer salary is budgeted at an officer first-class salary. So we're just taking that money and applying it to raise that probationary salary to make it a more enticing offer to a new recruit.
Okay, got it. All right, very good. My second question is, the salary study, Mayor Hamilton, you said that it includes all employees. Does that include electeds?
No, it does not. I said it would, it may input, it may give us some input that would affect a lot of employees. It does not study elected official salaries, nor is it really studying labor contract, union-governed employees. It's for the non-organized labor sector.
I'm curious why electeds weren't included.
Curious why what?
Why electeds weren't included.
We, we just didn't. I don't know. We didn't, no one asked us to, and we've been focused on that. We last did an elected official back in 2017, I guess.
Right. Well, I would have included elected since we just raised an elected salary, that being the clerk. an elected salary, that being the clerk. Okay, my last question is regarding the feature at the Gateway feature at Miller Showers. And I was going to reserve this to Director McDevitt, but I feel it's probably, it falls to your discretion more than hers. My concern is that it hasn't been properly vetted. The Arts Commission, to my understanding, didn't have any meaningful input in the project. And it seems to have, the public, such a significant feature, I think, really deserves to be more thoroughly vetted. Would you consider putting a pause on that project until we could do further review on it?
Well, of course, that doesn't have anything to do with this budget, but.
It was brought up during the budget presentation by Paula McDevitt.
She's reporting on her activities, for sure. Yeah, that was part of, of course, the 2018 bicentennial bonds, which were sold and dedicated for that purpose. And happy to talk about it with you offline or whenever. But we are, it was a very extensive public comment, very extensively studied and commented upon by scores of our residents. And we think it's a great addition to the city. And I know there may be some who disagree, but we feel very good about the prospect. And it's what the bonds were sold for, to be used for. And we're happy to continue to talk about that with you, but are not planning a pause in the process. It's well underway.
Well, I would encourage you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Any additional questions for the mayor? And seeing none, we thank you very much for the introduction. The next ordinances will be presented, salary ordinances will be presented by Emily Fields. And we will begin with the first one, Ordnance 23-25, an ordinance to fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington for the year 2024. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Emily Fields, also known as Emily Pearson. I'm the interim HR Director for the City of Bloomington. I'm here to present Ordnance 2325 that sets pay for appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for 2024. As a reminder, the administration is budgeted for a 5% increase to non-union civil city salaries. And those covered by the AFSMI agreement will also receive a 5% increase. Rates for common law or temporary positions have also been adjusted due to the increase in the living wage hourly rate. Currently is 1529 an hour, and it'll go to 1575 and 24 an hour. As previously mentioned, a $10,000 increase has been budgeted for the city council administrator attorney in accordance with the city council's request. The ordinance also includes a $500 bonus for eligible employees. This ordinance increases the city's workforce by about the equivalent of 31, 40-hour-per-week employees. Changes to 24 nontemporary or regular positions are reflected in this ordinance, along with several changes to temporary positions. Nine of those regular positions are considered repurposed. This means we change their pay grade and we change their title. Five of these positions received a pay grade change only, and about 10, or 10, actually, positions received a title change only. Pay grades are determined by a point factor evaluation method. I request that, when the time comes, you approve this ordinance. And I'm happy to answer your questions. There's a lot of details in the memo. I'm happy to expand on anything where you might need more details.
Questions from council regarding this particular budget presentation? Anyone on the Zoom call? Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. So the, can you tell me more about the $500 bonus for each employee that's covered under this ordinance? Where does that come from? What's the reasoning?
This year, we gave almost all employees a $1,000 bonus, just as a response to rising inflation, other pressures with retention, pay, different economic pressures that are happening for our employees. And this year, we wanted to sustain some of that. Or, I'm sorry, in 2024, we wanted to sustain some of that additional pay.
Does that come from ARPA funds?
No. And Controller Underwood can correct me, but I believe that's budgeted for in the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And seeing none from council, we will go to the public to see if there's any comment. And I will note that all public comment this evening will constitute the statutorily required public hearing on the city budget for 2024. So if we can put the appeal out to the public on Zoom, anyone here in chambers like to take the podium and make a comment about this particular salary ordinance?
That would like to speak to this item, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
And seeing no public comment, we will come back to the council for any questions that they may have thought of or final comments on Ordnance 23-25. Councilmember Scambalory.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate what you've shared about bonuses and dollars that are used for recruitment and retention. Could you, and this is a broader question than just this particular ordinance, but can you share what we are doing to track the success of those bonuses as recruitment and retention efforts? Or those salary increases as recruitment and retention efforts? In other words, how do we know that they're making the difference we hope they're making?
That is a great question. I would say we do offer exit interviews. And that was one of the questions that I responded to in one of the city council's questions. We do see sometimes from those exit interviews that people are, you know, seeking jobs because of pay or because of promotion. So we would hope to see a decrease in those sorts of responses. However, we don't have the best of luck with the response rate on those surveys. I would say those, I would say that we probably aren't doing a good job of trying to see how effective those bonuses are.
Are there plans to carry that, to invest more effort in that?
I know for our recruitment, we've discussed the recruitment costs in HR and our recruiter, who's spending time going to job fairs and doing other recruitment activities, how we are keeping a lot of data on those activities to try to tie that to results and see what's effective and what's not. I will think about your question, and it's a very good one and a very good suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I was wondering if you could give us an update on the Central Dispatch employees that are, have decided to unionize with CWA? Have there been ongoing discussions with that union?
Fortunately, I don't have any other updates from what we discussed the last time I was before you. We are waiting on those representatives to contact us with next steps.
So are those employees covered under Ordnance 2325?
Yes.
All right, I hope to hear about some progress soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or final comments? And seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the recommendation for Ordnance 23-25.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And I believe that passes 9-0. I think I heard everyone correctly. Thank you very much. And we will move on now to Ordnance 23-26, to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the City of Bloomington for the year 2024.
May I just have, issue a point of information?
Certainly.
Just to clarify for the audience or anybody who may be listening. So the votes that we take tonight are not binding. They are just a recommendation to ourselves when we meet on October 11th for the actual final vote. So just to clarify that.
Thank you. Your consideration is Salary Ordinance 23-26. That sets the maximum 2024 salary rates for City of Bloomington elected officials, which include the mayor, city council members, and the city clerk. Maximum salaries for the mayor and council members represent a 5% increase. The clerk's salary represents a 34% increase and is set at the request of council. Consistent with the current ordinance, Ordnance 23-26 also assigns an additional $1,000 per year for city council president and 800 per year for city council vice president due to the additional responsibilities of those positions. Your approval of this ordinance is requested. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this one? And seeing no one on the screen, so we will go to the public. Anyone here in chambers or anyone out in Zoom wish to comment?
Like to speak to this item, please indicate your desire to speak by using the raise hand feature or by sending a chat to the meeting host.
We'll give that a minute. All right. Back to council for any final comments on Ordnance 23-26. Councilmember Volin.
I'll be voting against this ordinance because I believe that the council made a mistake in not elevating the clerk to the equivalent of a department head. The, while it is true that the clerk's office and the council office have, are separately elected and have separate policies, both offices must request their budgets from the mayor, who makes the budget for the administration. And I think this is a mistake. And so based on the debate we had over this prior, I will not be supporting this ordinance. And I will be looking to bring an amendment to make that change to the clerk's budget, to the clerk's salary. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Councilmember Flaherty.
Well, I share the, I guess, reasoning of Councilmember Volin or share the preference with respect to the clerk's salary. I'll still be supporting, recommending, a positive recommendation on this tonight. I feel like, absent new information otherwise, we already had this collective conversation as a council and settled where we landed. And so while I would like the salary to be higher and more in line with other department heads, this is still, I think, a step forward and a good one. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no further questions or comments, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on the recommendation for Ordnance 23-26.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
No.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
All right, and that passes 8-2-1. Thank you. And next, we have Ordnance 23-24. This is the ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police fire department for the City of Bloomington for the year 2024. And I do believe we have an amendment. Do we want to raise that now or wait till after the presentation? Let's hear the presentation, please.
As stated, this is Ordnance 2324, outlining the 2024 salaries for officers for the police and fire departments. This ordinance also includes compensation for longevity, education, certification, and other qualifications defined by and provided for in the respective collective bargaining agreements. Salaries for fire captains, chauffeurs, and firefighters first class are listed according to the salaries outlined in their contract between the Bloomington, the City of Bloomington, excuse me, and the Bloomington Metropolitan Firefighters Local 586. And these salaries represent a 2% increase. Other fire personnel will receive a 5% increase, like civil city employees. The Assistant Chief changed to Assistant Chief of Administration and Planning to differentiate the position from the added Assistant Chief of Operations and to better reflect the duties of those positions. The fiscal impact of the new position, the Assistant Chief of Operations, is $1,8,950. In Section 1B, under the table that is titled as "Other", there were positions listed that are eligible for on-call pay. The titles of those positions were changed in the past, but hadn't been changed there. So there's a correction in this ordinance. And because it was just a temporary measure to assist with staffing concerns, the Kelly Day buyback benefit, that is in the current ordinance as amended, has been removed from the 2024 ordinance. The retention bonus awarding certain firefighters for work performed during COVID-19 pandemic has been modified and increased in Section 1F, Retention Pay. Excuse me. Salaries for officers first class and senior police officers are set in accordance with the negotiations between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 88 and represent a 2.8% increase. Supervisory Sergeant pay will increase by the same percentage as pay for senior police officers, 2.8%. And the other police personnel listed will receive a 5% pay increase. In addition, a salary range has replaced the pay grade for probationary officers. As Mayor Hamilton announced, starting pay for non-certified officers will increase by $5,000. Like non-union and AFSMI employees, certain police and fire personnel will receive an additional $500 bonus. Your approval of this ordinance is requested, and I'll take your questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions from council? I will start with a question about these retention bonuses. It seems like a lot of effort's being placed on the recruiting side of things with this. I guess this will be the amendment. Is this the amendment coming up or not? That has to do with fire, right?
The amendment is about increasing the retention bonus. That was in the previous version. Yes.
Okay. With these additional bonuses for recruits, new recruits, are there any concerns about wage compression? Because we've got two problems, right? We have the recruiting problem, but we also have a retention problem. And so sometimes you go and tweak one, and you're going to cause issues down the road for another. Do you get the gist of my question? Has there been any conversation about the wage compression issues that we may have with, you know, some of the newer recruits, starting at some pretty, much better salaries? But then some of the officers that have been on the job for a while will start to feel that they're not making quite as much as the new recruits?
I don't think that's the case. We are increasing that Officer First, or I'm sorry, the probationary police officer pay by $5,000. But there's still quite a bit of distance there between the Officer First Class pay. Let me just find that really quickly. So for example, Officer First Class pay is $68,184. And the probationary officer starting pay next year will be $63,800, or $683.45. Those officers first class also get a bunch of certification pay and benefits of the contracts, the extra pay that might be available in their collective bargaining agreement.
And that new recruit, does that include the $5,000 bonus?
That $5,000.
Okay, all right, thank you. Additional questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, Ms. Fields, could you tell me where the change, where in the ordinance is the change for the police officer's probationary pay?
There actually isn't a change in the ordinance for that. It was listed as a pay grade five, and we replaced it with a salary range. Let me find it. And I'm noticing the salary range here is $58,683, which is the current probationary officer pay, to $68,184.
In the ordinance, I'm trying to find it. Because I still see probationary officer with a grade five.
Are you looking under firefighter, the firefighter section or the police department?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am looking at fire. Yeah. Okay. So this is not something that was revised since this ordinance came out in the packet on Friday? Okay.
Sorry.
So the range 58,683 to 68,184, what would determine where in that range a person starting out as a probationary police officer would fall?
Certified police officers, those who have already been police officers elsewhere and transferred to the city, are still called probationary officers, but we, we want to pay them at the officer first class rate, which is $68,184. So that's the reason for the range. And the $5,000 increase was added after the publish, publishing of this salary ordinance, but it still falls within that range. So the starting pay for a non-certified officer would be $63,683, and then a certified officer would be $68,184.
I'm sorry, for the low end is now 63 something?
$63,683.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's strange because the, the heading of that table is grade or maximum based salary, and so the maximum based salary is now a range, which doesn't make much sense.
I understand.
Is okay with it. I'm okay with it.
All right. Questions? I see a hand up from councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, Ms. Fields. When you say certified officers, specifically with police officers, are we talking about academy, of them graduating from the academy? Is that one of the certifications?
Yes. I'm getting a head nod, nod from Chief Decoff. Yes.
Are there others that would make up the range difference? Or you go from one to the next based on that certification?
Chief Decoff is approaching the podium.
Thank you.
Mike Decoff, police chief. So what we're talking about is when we hire new police officers, some of them are certified, some of them are not. The certified police officers that are new are still probationary officers, but we are paying them at the officer first class rate. That is an incentive that we're doing to recruit already trained police officers. A person that is not certified that is hired as a probationary police officer is the lower rate. We raised that from the 58, from the 58,000 range up to the 63. So that's the difference.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I do have one other thing. This is just more, not so much budget related, but we've had difficulty getting officers scheduled for the academy. Is that still the case?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Sims. Anyone else with questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. Ms. Fields, for the education portion of the compensation for police, is, is that per year? So if somebody has a four-year degree, they get $1,200 additional per year?
Correct.
Okay. Are all of the, like the longevity and all that, that's also per year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other additional questions from council before we go to public comment? All right. And if we can make the appeal to anyone watching on Zoom and anyone here in chambers wish to make a comment regarding ordinance 23-24. And then we want to do the amendment after we do public comment? Since I've already called for it.
I will-
They're coming around.
Extend the invitation to the folks online. If you'd like to speak to this item, please let us know by raising your hand or sending a chat to the meeting host. One hand raised. Eric Spoonmore?
Let's start here in chambers, and then we will go to Mr. Spoonmore.
You're the president, Local 586. Have we got to our amendment part? I just want to-
No, this is on the-
Okay.
Ordinance as, as it was presented before the ordinance. Now, at this point, if, since we have one commenter who actually wants to comment on the amendment, if we can maybe hold on public comment and go ahead and deal with the amendment? If you would like to introduce that at this point, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move amendment one to ordinance 23-24.
Second.
I don't know if somebody from the administration would like to speak to this, but this is increasing the retention pay of firefighters in firefighters first class, chauffeurs and captains significantly to try to help the retention problems within the fire department. Ms. Fields, do you want to speak to it?
You summed it up very well. We're increasing the retention pay in section 1F so that certain firefighters, their base pay plus the retention pay is equivalent to $5,000 more than their 2023 base pay plus their 2023 COVID retention pay that they received.
I did talk with Chief Moore earlier today, and he was able to rearrange things in his budget so that this, this change will not result in an increase in the overall budget for the fire department.
Any questions from council regarding amendment one? And seeing no questions from council, we will now go to the public. And this will be about any comment you would like to make on this new amendment regarding retention for fire.
Sure. Thank you, President. First off, just want to say thank you. We're appreciative of the step forward to what is a more permanent solution on our retention issues. This bonus, which is not in our contract or to our pension base, brings us in alignment with other departments and their 2021 and 2022 salaries, many of which that are still greater than our current contract. So with that, we're here today and we say thanks. So we will, we want to thank you guys, the current city council, to support this amendment, to put us closer within our county peers. Thanks to Chief Moore, John Hamilton, for meeting with us and working to make this a better change. As the landscape changes in the fire service, we look forward to working with the next city council and mayor when it comes to compensation and benefits as we look to negotiate our contract in 2024. Thank you all again for the step in the right direction, and we look forward to working on the rest of the needed steps along the way. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Canada. And again, we will go to the public on Zoom if the comment is about this, this amendment regarding the fire retention increase.
Regarding this amendment one, please let us know by raising your hand or sending a chat to the meeting host.
And then we will have an opportunity for public comment on the ordinance as possibly amended when all this is over.
No hands raised on the amendment.
All right. Well, let's come back to council if anyone has any further questioning or comment on the amendment. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I would just like to commend everybody who was involved in making this amendment possible to increase the retention pay. I know that the, Mr. Canada and the fire union have been advocating and kind of pointing out to council members for many months now that there is a retention problem among the fire department. And so I'm grateful that Chief Moore was able to meet with them and meet with the administration and reshuffle things so that we could increase this retention pay. And hopefully, we will keep our experienced fire department officers, and this would be a good, this will be a good start to the negotiations that will commence in a few months for their new contract. So thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment from council? And I will just say again, thank you to Mr. Canada and everyone working on this and the reminder that this is a good first step, and I will encourage future administrations to continue the effort to make sure that we have competitive salaries for our frontline workers and all across the board. And again, step in the right direction is probably a good way to describe this amendment. So anyone else have another comment before we ask the clerk to call the roll on the recommendation for the amendment?
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
All right. That amendment passes nine zero, so that will be again considered at the next budget hearing. We move now back to the ordinance as amended, and we were to the point of listening for public comment. So again, anyone wanting to make a public comment about the ordinance as amended, feel free to raise your hand on Zoom. And then we have one member of the public here in chambers.
Good evening, councilmembers. Paul Post, president, FOP Lodge 88. First, I just wanted to make a note before I forget about it. The certified officers that we were talking about, lateral hires, that's what we desperately need. In Plainfield, next year, they'll start $9,000 more than a officer here will. $9,000. Just bear that in mind. In light of Mayor Hamilton's announcement tonight, increasing probationary officer pay by $5,000, we say thank you for that. Will that help us recruit new officers next year? We don't know. BPD remains 20-plus officers short and underpaid compared to our peers. What we do know that this gesture will do is it will, it will create further wage compression to the officer first class and, or senior police officer pay grades. While a possible positive for recruiting brand-new, untrained officers, it does not help us in retention. What we would like to see is further action regarding, affecting retention of your existing officers, aggressively recruiting already certified lateral hires. Hiring brand-new officers will not help manpower for almost two years. That's how long it will take to wait on the academy, get them through the academy, train them, bring them back to us to train some more, and get that help on the street. Hiring a certified officer will let us fill numerous open positions much faster. At the same time, we cannot continue to lose our good officers to other agencies who pay more. Similar to retention efforts with the fire department, we would like to see the percentage increase for all officers increased to 5% next year. This would help bring BPD in line with the rest of the city. It will be a direct gesture to your officers who are currently doing 20% more work than they need to be due to our large manpower shortages. Finally, we do not agree with using monies meant for sworn officer salaries to temporarily fund civilian positions. Work with us to do more to actually fill those officer positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Post.
Any more public comment on Zoom?
On Zoom, we have Eric Spoonmore.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. You will have the opportunity to unmute and make your comment.
Hello, council, and thank you, Madam Chair Sandberg, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Eric Spoonmore, president of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We're an independent nonprofit organization, and we're not affiliated with the Indiana State Chamber of Commerce or the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and we represent over 680 local small businesses, many of the businesses we all know and love that make Bloomington such a wonderful, caring, and compassionate community. We also have numerous members that are local nonprofit organizations, including Beacon, Wheeler Mission, United Way, and New Hope Shelter, just to name a few. I'm particularly proud to have the City of Bloomington and Monroe County government as partnering members of our local chamber as well. At a high level, our goal at the chamber is to improve the quality of life for the greater Bloomington community through a thriving business environment that will generate the resources necessary to make Bloomington the best possible community for people to live, work, visit, and have fun. I think these are probably goals that the city council and the chamber share together, and so we appreciate that. I also appreciate all the work and deliberations that you put into the budget formulation process. There's a lot in this budget that I'd like to talk about, but I have limited time, so I'll just touch on one area. And that concerns funding for public safety and some of the positions in the Bloomington Police Department. I think we all want Bloomington to be a community where people feel safe and are safe. And you may recall a few weeks ago during public comment, I posed a question to the council and asked what the goal is for public safety. If you don't remember, it's understandable. I only had two minutes to speak, so I get that. Anyway, my friend, councilmember Flaherty's response to that question was that his goal is public safety and security for all, and I think that's a goal that was stated in the CAPS report as well. And so I think that's kind of a broad but very good general goal for the city to have, public safety and security for all. So yes, we think that's a great start. But then last month, we also heard a representative from the CAPS Commission report to the city council that violent crime has increased by 24% in our city since 2016. During the same timeframe, the Bloomington Police Department has lost over 20% of its sworn officers. And so as you can imagine, the rise in violent behavior is of concern to many of our members, which I represent. It's my job. Now, I can't say for certain if there's any correlation between the loss of police officers and the rise in violent crime rates in Bloomington, but I don't think it should just automatically be dismissed as a coincidence. And so I'll say again that we urge the city and the city council to do everything within its power to fully staff the number of police officer positions that are funded by this budget for our great Kalia certified police department. And in parallel, we should also invest much more than what's in this budget on other non-police mechanisms that can meaningfully curb the violent crime in Bloomington that's been trending upward.
Mr. Spoonmore, my apology for interrupting. You are at your time, and it was my failure to not say we have three minutes for public comments. So your time is up. We appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
I see.
All right. And seeing no one here in chambers, we come back to the council for any final statement or any further questioning. Councilmember Volin?
I keep going back to this moment 19 years ago when it was my first year and Mayor Cruzan's first year, and at that time, we had 84 sworn officers that we were funding. And in that year, Mayor Cruzan declared that he was going to increase the police force to 100 officers within eight years, two a year on average. And that, that was at the time in an era when there wasn't quite as much controversy about policing or the market for police officers. The city was able to achieve that, but growth at two net officers a year was non-trivial. The city achieved it, but it, I don't think they could have grown any faster than that. And so we fast forward to 20 years later, and the market is very, very different for police officers. And we have 84 officers on duty and 105 lines that we're funding. I've never really understood what good it is to revert 20 officers' worth of salary. I mean, like even if we were to increase at a, double the rate of the 2000s, it would still take as many years to get up to 105. And it seems to me useless to just fund 20 line items of officers and then revert the money every year with no end in sight. I, I certainly understand the different concerns that rank-and-file officers have about it, but I would rather see 10 of those positions go to increasing the salaries of everyone or used accordingly to retain officers than to keep funding positions that aren't going to get filled next year. They're not going to get filled next year. There's no way that, I mean, we know that there's a crunch for the demand for, for officer pay is higher elsewhere. Why are we funding those positions if it's, the police union is worried about the signal that it sends that somehow we're not funding enough officers? I mean, I would say we're trying to do it, we would be doing it in order to increase officers, to reduce their workload. It would take the new mayor and the new council to make some kind of declaration as to at what rate they're going to try to grow the force. It's certainly beyond this council or this mayor or this budget, but it clearly is time for a new commitment to be made to it. But at the very least, we should be thinking about using that money to pay existing officers better. We've, we can't have all three things. We can have two out of three things. We can have everyone better paid. We can have more officers. We can have empty line items. I don't know. It's still a conundrum that no one has explained to me, and I wish that both- to me, and I wish that both parties, the administration and the police union, would consider it. Having said that, I'm going to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo, you have your hand up.
Yes, thanks. Well, Councilmember Volin made the point that I wanted to make, and he actually said it quite well, very well, indeed. I wouldn't renege on that the number of 105 is the optimum as the number of officers that we should have, but it is frustrating that we see the reversions every year without an increase in the actual number of police officers. And clearly, this is what we're doing tonight or what we're recommending that we do tonight is an improvement, but it's not enough, as was described by Officer Post and Mr. Spoonmore. So I think it's very important that we remain competitive with other communities. We're losing valuable personnel. We continue being understaffed, and, you know, we keep suffering this attrition problem. And it's very worrisome to me because of morale, because of stress, and it's a hazardous position to be in, to be an officer, and we can't afford to have people working overtime, forced overtime. So I agree with Councilmember Volin. I'd like to continue working on this. Clearly, we have our work cut out for us, but I don't think we have any choice but to look at greater compensation. So I want to continue that conversation next year, but I'll be voting yes on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, and thanks for the comments, and I'll be supporting this ordinance as well. I'm sorry, I'm, yes, ordinance as well. A couple things. Earlier on, we were talking about how do we track and collect data on some of the results that we're seeking. And I, let me say this too. I do agree with my council colleagues, Councilman Rallo and Councilmember Volin, but to make a blanket statement, I think there's some other considerations moving forward. For an example, if we use the budgeted funds to increase the salary of those that we have currently, and that is one option, but if we get to the point where we do get the officers to meet the budgeted amount, then where, how do we fund that moving forward? Do we prioritize and redistribute funding within the overall budget? Do we consider an increase in the revenue stream? And that's one of my concerns moving forward, even with the next council and the next administration, is that ultimately to raise revenue streams is still going to have adverse effect on a larger portion of our community. So it's not a reason not to do. It's just a reason to keep those concerns to the forefront. And when I talked about data earlier, Mr. Post was speaking, and I really appreciate him communicating with us over the course of months and that sort of thing. But the question was asked, will this funding that we're talking about or increases help with recruiting? And the answer was, we don't know. And then the statement I also think that he made, if I heard correctly, that this does not help with retention. And I don't disagree with either of those statements. I just think it points to how important it is to somehow track those results along the way to make sure, or at least to have an idea of if our investments are getting the results that we're hoping they will be. If we're 20 officers short, and I understand some of those are pay issues, but part of it is retiring officers that we've not been able to replace, which may or may not be a salary issue. So I just think better data, better tracking through exit interviews, through HR, these sorts of things is in order, and I would strongly suggest that we consider that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Final comment? Councilmember Volin?
Just to respond to my esteemed colleague, I would rather have 10 more officers who are well-trained to our high standards retained than 20 positions continuing to go unfilled. If it means that we simply reduce those positions that we could never fill anyway, we haven't been able to fill for years, and it means that we have 95 fully funded, active officers who want to stay, then let's do that. That was my point. I don't see any value in continuing to have positions that we can't fill, that we fund year after year, that money gets reverted, and we don't solve our problems. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I will just thank my colleagues for their thoughtful final comments here. I have been concerned about this issue for a number of years now, ever since we have been discussing this with our rank-and-file, with our officers who are working overtime. We're spending quite a bit of money on overtime because we are so short-staffed. We have officers who are exhausted. We have officers who are, in addition to not being competitive in terms of salaries that other places are now starting to offer, they are just looking for other communities where maybe the working conditions will be less stressful than they are here. And so I have characterized this as a crisis, and I think for many of us, it still is. And while I won't be around next year in order to work on how do we get to the crux, how do we get to the actual root of the problem, why we're losing officers, well-trained officers, good personnel to other communities who are getting it, who are doing a better job than we are on both fronts, the retention and the recruiting of good, well-trained officers that this community deserves. And so tonight, I will be abstaining just in principle because I have no solutions to offer this year, but I have characterized what we're doing as kind of working around the edges. We're doing little things here and little things there, and we're always grateful for the movement in what I said tonight, a step in the right direction, but it's not the ultimate answer. We're missing the mark, and the community is going to suffer as a result if future minds don't get it together with respect to our salaries, our competitiveness, and things that actually are measurable in terms of are we solving this problem? Are we getting our police force up to the numbers that we require in order to keep this community safe? I hear from a number of people in the community about the police are not as responsive as they used to be, and, you know, is it because they're not well-trained and professional, or is it because they're short-staffed? And I would say it is the latter. So tonight, I will be abstaining. Any further comment before we call the recommendation roll? All right, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the recommendation.
Councilmember Piedmont, 23-24 as amended.
All right. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Abstain.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes eight zero one. We are now moving on. Thank you, Ms. Fields. We appreciate your presentations. We're moving on to appropriation ordinance 23-06, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the City of Bloomington for the year 2024. And with us to present, Mr. Vic Kelson.
Good evening. I'm Vic Kelson, Utilities Director. Just a couple of comments. At the hearing on the 29th, there were some errors in the tables. They've now been corrected and verified by the Controller's Office. We do apologize for that, that error. I would also like to comment briefly about the question that's come up a couple of times regarding whether our efforts for recruitment and retention are actually working. At this point in 2022, we were somewhere between 15 and 20 staff members short in our transmission and distribution garage. Those are the people who are out there responding to water main breaks. They're laying water mains. They're repairing services and all that kind of work. There's a lot of outdoor work, excavations, working in dangerous settings, and lots of times. There are first responders. They, we had been losing them during the pandemic, and as the pandemic was fading, because there's a lot of investment being made in critical infrastructure in the United States, and people were just finding much better wages elsewhere and were leaving us. Last year, during the union negotiations, Ms. Fields from the HR Department, our legal department, and our ASME members all worked on this problem. And at the end of the day, we were able to create some new classifications specifically addressing the competitive issues that we were having with those, those particular positions in transmission, distribution, or TND as we call it. I'm happy to say that as of the end of August, we've filled all of those positions, so we are now fully staffed in the garage. So at least we were, we were successful in our efforts to improve recruitment and retention in that part of our department. And I want to thank everybody, our union representatives, union leadership, the HR Department, the legal department, and the mayor for his support, and the council for their support in that effort as well. Beyond that, there's nothing changed in our budget request, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions from council regarding utilities? Councilmember Volin?
Oh, no question?
No one on Zoom? Anyone from the public wishing to make a comment?
If there are viewers in the public joining via Zoom that would like to speak to the utilities budget, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or by sending a chat to the meeting host.
And I see no one approaching the podium from chambers?
I see no hands going up in Zoom.
All right, we will come back to council for any final comments or additional questions they may have thought of. And seeing none, I guess we are ready to ask the clerk who has stepped out of the room. Stall for time, will you, Councilmember Volin?
When do you expect the next rate case to be made?
As council suggested, we're trying to continue the every-four-year process. We did sewer and storm last year. We anticipate doing water in 2024.
Beginning or end of the year?
It will begin at the beginning of the year, yes.
And how long will the rate case take to make?
Well, it'll take probably about three or four months for us to assemble the requests. It would have to go to board and council, so I would anticipate we'd be before council sometime in the first half of the year. And then it goes to the Indiana Utilities Regulatory Commission, and from there, it can take anywhere from three to nine months.
Very good. I think I've done my job stalling. Thank you.
And now, Madam Clerk, if you will call the role on the recommendation on ordinance 2306.
Scambaluri?
Yes. Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And that passes nine zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelson. Moving on to appropriation ordinance 23-07, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2024. And with us, we have Mr. John Connell.
Good evening, John Connell, General Manager, Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation, requesting council's approval of an adopted tax rate of .0391 to support the 2024 budget that totals $26,607,394.
All right, very good. Any questions for Mr. Connell? And seeing no questions from council, we will go to public, and I will note that this public comment portion will constitute the statutorily required public hearing on the transit budget for 2024. So if you want to make that appeal to the Zoom public, anyone here from chambers wish to make a comment?
Any folks online that would like to speak, please raise your hand or send a chat to the meeting host.
No hands popping up from the public. Anyone from council wish to make a final comment? And seeing none, we thank Mr. Connell, and we will ask the clerk to please call the role on the recommendation.
Yes. Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Okay, and Piedmont Smith?
And someone is out of the room, so that passes eight zero zero. Thank you. The last item on the agenda this evening is appropriation ordinance 2305, an ordinance for the appropriation and tax rates established in the 2024 civil city budget for the City of Bloomington. And Mr. Underwood, you're up.
Good evening. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. Thanks again to all my fellow department heads, the mayor's office, especially my staff, Jack McMillan and Cheryl Gilliland and Julie Long and others that have worked many, many hours to bring you this information. I'm going to be brief. The mayor's covered most of what we have to say tonight, but just some highlights to say that we now move from the program budgets that were presented in August to the state mandated forms. As noted, this meeting serves as a public hearing for the budget. The budget was duly advertised on the state's gateway site, which sets the maximum budgets for each form, each fund, and that was on Form 3. It also creates appropriation ordinance 2305 for your council review, an action that covers a total of 37 funds, but again, sets the maximum amount on that. As the mayor noted, the revised total budget excluding utilities and transit is just over $150 million, an increase of slightly more than $21 million or 16.4%. This budget continues to maintain good reserves in our general fund, which is a combination of the general fund and the rainy day fund. We're projecting by the end of 2024 that that amount will be 39.2%, and the target being 33. As noted, we have refunds that got changed, the general fund, an increase of just over $12 million, which was the 5% COLA for council members, the adjustment in the clerk's salary, a slight adjustment in the tax caps, and decreed expenditures, as the mayor covered. We did then add $7.275 million to the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, fund, and then one change in the digital equity fund, increasing that position from part-time to full-time. Those are the changes in the budget. My fellow department heads are here with me tonight as well, and are happy to answer any questions that you might have on this budget, and thank you for its consideration and hopeful for its approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Questions from council members? Seeing none, we shall go to the public. Oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
So I guess I have a general question, so I'm not sure who could answer it, but overall, in this budget, which of course includes police and fire departments, what, and community family resources and others, what are the new investments or continued investments in an overall view of public safety as far as the well-being of people in our community, and not just in regards to crime prevention and crime apprehension?
Who would like to tackle that question?
Deb, if I can repeat it to make sure I under-
Deb, if I can repeat it to make sure I understood it, you're asking, what are the overall budget investments for the welfare of our people separate from, not focused on public safety?
No, public safety, but public safety writ large. So trying to help people be more secure in their lives apart from traditional policing.
Well, a lot. Within the public safety departments, of course, we have substantial new investments in, in paramedic, from the fire department, in non-sworn downtown-focused boots on the ground to help provide assistance and eyes and ears and referrals with the five new FTE community service specialists. They may be a mix of part-time as well. We have a new after-hours ambassador, new position in the department. We have a million dollars for public health investment proposed as a one-time investment. We have enormous investments in housing improvements, which I think are critically important to improve safety for all of us. I probably could go on and on and on, but I mean, I think, when I said we have, I think we do, the best public safety departments in the state, clearly accredited, number one ISO, we also have very, very progressive and evolving approaches to public safety. And I think that that's incorporated in what we're doing, the 911 pilots where we're going to be responding. I don't know if you saw a big article about Indianapolis today doing that and some of the data from there. So investing in different responses to emergencies in our community. So I think there's a huge number of investments that are broadly public safety besides just the sworn officer corps.
Thank you. I have a related question, but, but more specific. And so it might be for Chief DeCof. I know that traditionally, the downtown resource officers have been volunteers from among the sworn officer pool, but I, last time I checked, there was only one downtown resource officer. And I know that this, in August, the mayor did say that there were going to be some non-sworn officers teamed up with DROs. But I would like to hear whether some sworn officers might be assigned to be DROs or how we can increase that number because I think they were quite effective.
Yes, what we've done with our DRO program is we've opened it up to part-time position, part-time DROs. And so we have got, I think, two or three currently that are doing the work of a DRO part-time. One of those officers has a master's in social work. So we're thinking of different ways to do that. One of the things that we're going to do with the increase in the community service positions downtown is look at hiring outreach workers from Centerstone to assist in our efforts downtown to try to address a lot of the problems we've got going on down there.
And those positions are, those are funded by Centerstone? So it would be a?
No, that's, we would hire them part-time as city employees with what we were talking about doing with the increase in the five FTEs for the downtown, or the community outreach people, community service specialists.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I supplement? One thing I forgot to mention, I think it could be for your prior question, councilmember Piedmont Smith, I just want to call out too, public safety involves a lot of things. Just earlier this week, we had a meeting with a governor's cabinet member dealing with drug issues and we sat down with Centerstone and our parks department and our public works department reporting on the jobs program that we've been operating, begun with parks, added public works. That program, which is run by Centerstone, funded by us, by you, as well as some with Centerstone, has employed 122 people in the last five years or so, four, five years, three quarters, two-thirds of whom were homeless at the time of employment. It has produced all of those folks getting housing, all of the homeless who have been in that program have now moved into housing. Several have moved into full-time employment. And that program, which is one of the programs that we do, I think is the kind of thing that has a major long-term effect on public well-being and safety. And I'm really proud of Parks and Public Works and what they've done with that. And we're continuing to invest more. We're doing nearly half a million dollars a year out of the general fund for that, which you have supported. And I think we asked the state, will you double it? And they haven't given us an answer yet, but that's another kind of thing that we do that I think really reaches deep, but it's hard to see sometimes.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we will go to the public. Again, this is my opportunity to say that this comment portion will constitute the statutorily required public hearing on the city budget for 2024. So last opportunity for the public to weigh in here and make a comment.
If there are any members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature to let us know or send a chat to the meeting host.
And we will have three minutes per commenter. No hands? All right, we are back to council to make a final comment on the budget as a whole. Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I think everyone knows by now my concern over creed money. I disagree strongly with the mayor about his reading of how that money should have been used. It's been my experience that every other council member has at one point claimed the downtown as their neighborhood. Everyone sees the downtown as their neighborhood. I actually represent the downtown as a neighborhood. And so to recognize that there is a tax district that is entirely within District 6 that is specifically meant to inure to the benefit of that district, there's a tax that's been made for its benefit. I think people can understand why I might be jealous of it. But I would caution everyone before they approve the portion of the budget that uses creed money, which by the way, the administration was unable to separate enough to be able identify which dollars would be spent in the creed district and which ones wouldn't be. Again, because there, the mayor's expansive reading of this is, we should be able to, the district is expired, we should be able to use it for whatever, that's what state law says. But I'm going to read from the whereas clause in, let's see, it was Resolution 0326, which created the downtown creed. It said, "Whereas, within a creed, certain special economic development tools are available, including tax credits for qualified investors in the creed, deposit of certain tax revenues in the industrial development fund for the incentives for redevelopment in the creed and bonding ability." The assumption was always that this money should be spent in the district where it was taken from. But the administration didn't use these special economic development tools. There were a variety of tools they could have used. In my mind, they should have spent this money down to zero in the creed district. But instead, they selectively read the ordinance. They only pursued one aspect, I'm going to pull this up again here. They could have pursued downtown vacancies, they could have pursued utility infrastructure, they could have pursued parking infrastructure. They only pursued employment opportunities and they only, this administration only funded one, to the tune of less than a million dollars out of the 10-plus that was available in the fund. They could have pursued building upgrades. That was actually, they pursued a building upgrade in order to help an employer pursue more opportunities. So if the administration, knowing that they have this fund, but deciding to selectively read it, doesn't bother to spend the money, knowing that if the fund expires and they haven't spent it all, they can, they get to just punt it to the general fund. Why should this council ever again approve a special tax, knowing that an administration will find a loophole to move it somewhere to do whatever they want with it? Why should we ever approve another special understanding? I find it really off-putting and I don't think it's a precedent that we should set here. So let's talk about the problem with the 10 million that they're spending. 7.9 million of it, only the last item in the memo from Mr. Allen that was sent, the downtown activation and maintenance, 2.1 million, is clearly in the creed. But let's take 2.7 million from the creed for traffic, city, modernization and replacement. That's all over the city. It doesn't benefit the downtown alone. Greenways, 1.2 million, that's great. I support greenways too, but this is money that came from the downtown and it's being spread across the rest of the city. 2.0 million dollars for street maintenance for buses and bikes. I support all those things too, but not with this money. Is, is any money from the state fungible? Should we really just shrug and not care? 2.0 million dollars for safe streets for all. Who's going to be opposed to that? But with this money, there's even a million dollars in affordable housing coming from the creed. None of that housing is going to get built in the creed. I just, call me crazy. I'm trying to do right by my district. This seems like a clear, cut and dried case. The administration conveniently sat on the money, didn't spend it, and so they could use it for whatever they wanted to, once it inevitably expired. They had plenty of time to use it on other things. There were plenty of other things they could have used it on, the Forest Street Garage being one example. Squarely in the creed, squarely in what it was for, didn't have to use TIF funds for, we could have used it for something else, maybe for some of these things. Is it going to make a difference if I bring an amendment to cut some of this? Probably not, but I'm going to bring an amendment to cut these until it's done right. The creed district deserved a lot more investment than it got. If there's one thing I can suggest, electrical infrastructure around the square, 150-year-old, 200-year-old square could stand to be improved, maybe buried. We could have activated more alleys with that money, any number of things we could have done with that money. I proposed, and this council, to my pleasant surprise, supported the proposal for a downtown circulator with $5 million of that money. That would be squarely in the creed's benefit. Maybe we can make an argument, maybe the administration could make an argument for things that would serve the creed that would also serve tangential or adjacent plots of land. I'm not sure how clear state law is on it, but it is still clear to me that this feels like a 20-year bait and switch. And while I appreciate what he's trying to spend the money on now, I don't appreciate the way he's trying to spend it. And I would urge my colleagues to support a rethinking of the spending of that particular fund, at least until they can break down, until they can break down how much will be spent in the district and how much won't be, I'll be moving to cut 7.9 million. If they want to come back and say that certain programs that they're going to spend money on, I can propose cutting less. But having said that, otherwise, I'm generally pleased with the direction that the budget is going. This is a glaring exception. Thank you for the extended time to speak.
Thank you. Additional comments from council? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I'll echo the last thing councilmember Volin said first, which is that I think this is overall a good budget. I support it and I'm pleased with all the work that went into it in the general direction of the city. Just a few thoughts, I'm not unsympathetic to my colleagues' points about the creed, but I don't think I see it quite the same way. There's, and I don't think it was quite so intentional perhaps. I think it just sort of is the way decisions were made and funding needs were identified and, you know, pursued over time. I don't think it was a, I guess a bait and switch, to use the term that my colleague did. But I'm still happy to consider, you know, an amendment and weigh it on its merits, even though I'll be voting in support, you know, via recommendation tonight. A couple questions for me that councilmember Volin's comments invite. One is that by the same logic, should we be demanding that 6.4 million that was left over from the Thompson creed be spent in the, what was the Thompson creed district? I would think by extension that that case should be applied there too. And I, I don't know if that makes sense either. Clearly by the rules, you know, if the funds aren't expended and they, or spent and they revert to the general fund, they can be used elsewhere. I would also wager that like probably 50 to 75% of the 12 million proposed here will happen in the downtown. That's where most of the signals are. That's where the most, you know, pedestrian infrastructure is. There's a lot of need there. So I think a lot of the benefit will, in fact, flow there. It's difficult to determine exactly how much because the projects are not yet determined because it's a lot of small things added up. And then finally, I'll just note that this proposal is 12 million out of what is, I think, about 17.2 million in creed funds. So what's to say this isn't the Thompson money mostly and some downtown, what was downtown money? It all became, you know, intermingled obviously when it went to the general fund, but this also isn't all of the creed dollars, I guess. And so it could be up to this council or others to request appropriations from that additional money in the future to further benefit the downtown. But, so that's all to say, I am sympathetic to some of what councilmember Volin said, but I think there are some reasons that I see some of it a little bit differently. All the same, happy to consider an amendment on this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I see councilmember Rallo had a hand up?
Well, I did, and I think that councilmember Flaherty summed up my opinion as well. I think I will abstain this evening just to consider councilmember Volin's point of view and discuss it with him. Cutting 7.9 million dollars is a big ask. I don't anticipate doing that. I think that the budget is sound. There are certainly expenditures that I wish had been made that weren't, but overall. But does this set a precedent? Don't know. I'd like to consider it a bit more, so I'll abstain on this this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, to answer councilmember Flaherty's question, yes, the money should be spent where it was raised. That is the clear intent of the legislation. It's a clear intent of the statute. In the Thompson creed, about half the money was spent, about 6.5 million dollars was spent almost entirely in the, no, in fact, all of it was spent in the Cruzan administration. About six and a half million dollars is about seven million left from it. So there was more of an effort made there. I questioned it at the time, but I don't question the intent of the legislation at the state level. The difficulty to determine exactly how much money is going to each thing misses the point. If the administration had instead asked the question, how can we spend this money in the creed fund in the creed district where it was generated, they would have come to different conclusions about how to spend the money. The administration decided they wanted to do something, then they went looking for a source of money. Here is convenient source of money. If I were an administration, I would be doing something similar, but the bottom line is, that's not what these funds were for. And the administration had many opportunities over two terms to make different choices and they didn't. They made one narrow choice and now they're spending all the money at once. I mean, this is not the way we should be doing business. It's not the way we should be reading code. I'll call attention to the fact that the enabling legislation that created the 2001 parking garage at Seventh and Walnut and the 2003 legislation that brought the Morton garage into existence, the legislation locally called for increases in parking in order to fund it, to reduce the demand from the TIF. This council was asleep at the wheel and didn't bother to raise revenues in the garages for more than a decade. So that, if anybody has any strong feelings about TIF money, I mean, I guess we have a precedent. We've been spending money collectively like drunken sailors for a long time, not paying close enough attention to what the money was intended for, what the legislation specifically called for, what the intent was. So I have no choice, honestly, but to raise an objection now. I don't particularly want to cut funding to well-meaning services, let alone ones that I agree with, but I also believe I need to serve my district and I believe that this district deserves. district deserves serving by the fund that was created for it. So I'm going to be voting no as a recommendation tonight, and I'll be looking to form an amendment to cut as many funds as would be appropriate to cut in order to make sure that it gets spent where it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no more comments from the council, I will ask Madam Clerk to please call the role in our recommendation for appropriation ordinance 2305, which is the civil city budget for 2024.
Sandberg?
Abstain.
Smith?
Abstain.
Volin?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Excuse me, Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Abstain.
All right, and that is 5-1-3. And that concludes our recommendations this evening, and that will be the end of our committee of the whole meeting for September 27. Thank you. We are adjourned.